Let's call this regular zoning board appeals meeting to order at 6:30. If we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three on our agenda tonight is roll call. Ms. Slosson, if you can please call the roll.
Absolutely. Member DeCosta?
Here.
Member Posey?
Here.
Member Piper?
Here.
Member Slosson is present. Member Tuckfield? Note the record that he's absent.
Yeah, he is actually excused for today. He called in and let us know. If I can entertain a motion to exclude Mr. Tuckfield, will he be called for a roll call?
So moved.
I'll make that motion.
Oh.
Right.
Second.
Motion by Piper, seconded by Ms. Posey. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Number four is addressing any conflicts of interest. We typically do a roll call at this point, and if you have any conflict of interest, you will indicate yes. If you do not, you will indicate no. Ms. Slosson, would you please call the roll here?
Yes, certainly. Member DeCosta?
No.
Piper?
No.
Posey?
No.
And Slosson, no.
Thank you. Number five is the approval of the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look and review the agenda? If so, are there any motions to approve?
Motion to approve is presented.
Support?
Motion by Mrs. Posey, seconded by Ms. Slosson. All those in favor sitting by facing aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Number six is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. If you've had a chance to review these, will you entertain a motion?
Motion to approve is presented.
Support?
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Ms. Slosson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes. Number seven tonight is old business. We do have one piece of old business, and that is with regards to permanent parcel This is a variance request with regards to section 10 dot 0704 dot E dot 1. And this is a request for a front yard setback reduced from 55 feet from the center line of Bannister Drive to 50 feet from the center line for a patio. Mr. Box, if you can take us through this one, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. As you mentioned, this is under old business. It's actually rather old. It's a couple of years old. This is an item that came before you in 2019. The property is located, as you see on the map there, at the corner of Jamestown Drive and Bannister Drive, between 21 and 22 mile on the west side of Heidenreich. They are, in fact, seeking a variance from a front yard setback from 55 feet down to 50 feet. As I mentioned, this did come in in 2019. At that time, they were seeking three variances. I was not here at that time, but my understanding is they were granted two, and the third one was tabled to determine whether or not they actually do need the variance. I did speak with the building department. They do, in fact, need this variance. It was tabled to the next meeting, I believe it was May of 2019. That meeting was canceled, and then at that point, the petitioner, for whatever reason, decided they didn't want to pursue this. So it was just kind of sitting out there. Well, now they do want to pursue this. So they're back for that third variance that they do need. So you can see the plot plan here. This is a double-fronted lot, so what would typically be the side yard is the front yard. So it has some different setbacks. On the left side of that image is Bannister. That's the location where they're seeking a 50-foot setback as opposed to a 55-foot setback. The planning department, again, I was not here in 2019. At that time, they did recommend denial of this request, as they thought it would convey a property right to this lot that not other lots would have within the same zoning district. And I think at this time, our feeling is similar in that we would defer to the petitioner to indicate what their hardship is for this variance.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Box this time?
Hearing none as a petitioner here in the audience tonight. I do not see anyone. How about anybody from the audience? Would anybody from the audience like to speak regarding this issue? So seeing none. I'll bring it back up to the Board here for any other questions or comments or concerns. I myself only really had one maybe question for the planning director. Has there any been any ordinance changes with regards to this setback or anything that would affect this in the last two years?
There have been no ordinance changes that would affect this, no.
Okay. From what I remember, I don't want to speak for the rest of the Board, I don't remember looking to approve this. I don't remember any type of practical difficulty, and without the petitioner being here, I don't know if there is a new practical difficulty with this. Those are my only comments. If the Board has any other comments or concerns, motions?
Chairman, I would just like to indicate that it doesn't state any reason why they couldn't do a smaller swimming pool to accommodate the ordinance as is, which would have been helpful if the petitioner was here to state those reasons. That's all I have.
My recollection from, and I walked past there just to look at it again to refresh my memory, is the practical difficulty was on the backside because of the drainage. That's why those variances are granted. I didn't see where the practical difficulty was going towards Bannister.
I do remember something similar. We do have an audience member entering. Now, I will ask, sir, are you here for item 7A by?
Yeah, it's supposed to be a meeting or something.
Yeah, are you here with regards to 7A, the property? Okay. Are you the petitioner or are you just a member, a resident?
I got a letter in the mail saying you were having a meeting, taking a vote on the 3 to 1 ratio.
Okay. That's actually, that's, I believe, an upcoming item. But thank you, we'll get to you shortly. Anything else from the Board?
Hearing none, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to deny the variance request for section 10 point 0704 dot dash dot D dash 1 dash 1.
Motion by Ms. Posey. Do we have a second?
Support?
Support by Ms. Slosson. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That denial passes. On to item 8A. This is new business. This is with regards to permanent parcel 0805122005. This is a variance request for section 10 dot 0704 dot B dot 3. This is to allow a front elevation. The structure's first floor to be 7.5 feet above the lowest top of curb elevation on the adjacent roadway along the parcel's frontage, where the ordinance requires 6 feet. Mr. Box, if you can take us through this one, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This, the affected property, as you see in the image behind you, is just south of 26 Mile and via Palmetto subdivision. The site is being developed as a single-family residential subdivision, and as you mentioned, they are seeking to allow the first floor to be 7.05 feet above the lowest top of curb elevation, where the ordinance requires 6 feet. The basement has already been constructed, 1 foot above, 1.05 feet actually, above the ordinance requirement. In the rear yard, along the north lot line, there was a benchmark that I think was overlooked, and in a second, I'll show you a little bit more about that. But granting of this variance would allow the basement to remain as it's currently constructed. So the images you see behind you, two different images. One was the approved version, and the other is the updated version that they're seeking to move forward. So the approved version, as I said before, it's got to be 6 feet, no more than 6 feet above the lowest point on the curb line, and they were using a benchmark. And typically, you know, in a subdivision, you just have one 70-foot section. Well, because it's a corner, there was some miscommunication. Somebody looked at the wrong spot, took the elevation of one frontage, and actually there was a lower benchmark on the other frontage. So that's what they're seeking to move forward with now. That being said, and I think Mr. Van Tiflin can maybe talk to this a little bit more, but I guess we're going to defer to, again, the petitioner to explain the difficulty, I think, at this point. We don't see the practical difficulty, you know, it's not an odd-shaped lot like we see sometimes. It's not a pie-shaped lot or anything like that. This doesn't have to do with an easement causing an irregularity. So we're going to defer to the petitioner to explain that. But I don't know, Jim, if you wanted to add a little more?
No, just to clarify, we did have an approved plan that did meet the ordinance. They were able to keep the finished floor below that 6-foot mark. However, there was a mistake that was made in construction, and that's where we're at, is they're trying to save the basement from having to have it taken out and replaced. So that's really the basis, and like Josh said, it's up to the petitioner to make his case.
Thank you. As a petitioner here in the audience tonight, if so, can you please join us at the podium and state your name and address for the record?
Simon Morrow with Morrow Engineering, representing the petitioner, Golden Homes. The owner of Golden Homes just called me. He was at a funeral. He's running late. So I'll be here, and I'm also representing Morrow Engineering. I have some pictures, and we have a plot plan. I'd just like to go over the procedure, how it all happened, and it was, could I approach him?
Sure.
This plot plan was prepared by our office, and as Mr. Josh Rogers, he had said that it was the wrong benchmark that was used. The wrong benchmark was on the original plot plan that got approved by the community, got approved through engineering, got approved through the building department. It got built that way. And when we did the preliminary grade, the utilities were installed, the sanitary sewer, the water line were all installed, all according to plan. When we did the preliminary grade certificate, we realized, we kind of turned ourselves in, hey, there's a problem here. We're within the limits of the ordinance in the rear, but because in the front, if you look at this elevation here in the front, all of this is within the ordinance. If you're looking at the house from the front on Rose Garden, this meets the ordinance. But as you go down this street, this benchmark that was used, that was incorrect. It was in the plot plan, and this street that's down 2 feet, because there's a drain running through here. And being that it's thin, then we're out of the ordinance. If we don't meet the ordinance by 12 inches, there's a mistake, and the way it was posted, it said it was 7.5, which is only 7.05, which is only 12 and 1/2 inches. It would be the variance requested from this rear benchmark. But all in here, it all meets the ordinance. So really, to tear out a basement, and actually, we thought about cutting the top of the basement to meet, within the ordinance, then it would violate other building restrictions, because then the ceiling would be too low in the basement, and you would not have a basement. It'd be like a crawl space, which then you'd be violating other things in the subdivision that you're not allowed a crawl space. So at this point, we asked for a variance request for this. The hardship is that all the utilities were installed, the basement was installed. To tear out a perfectly good functional basement would be like a shame. I just don't know, you know, what else to say. And as you can see, if you're facing Rose Garden Lane, you're within the ordinance. You make the ordinance. It's not a problem facing that. And the neighbor next door, the builder, developer, has control of that lot. We can actually adjust those grades, too. And we're willing to cut the brick ledge grade, so there will be no grading issues whatsoever on this lot. And it's just where it falls shy, it's just the portion where it dips down. It goes down because of that drain. This road is a stub street. It dips down 2 feet, and that's where the variance request is, we would ask. I took these pictures, and I kind of did that just so, because it's hard to understand. The other problem, Jim, and I don't think you realize that, that the sanitary sewer is a little bit higher in this area. Usually, this problem, these variances, I don't know if you're familiar with this ordinance that was put in place. It's not that old of an ordinance. It's fairly new. It was put in place because there was builders in the past taking advantage of certain things, such as somebody wanted a forced walkout basement, so they had a bunch of steps going into the home so they can get themselves a walkout. Or they wanted additional windows in their rear yard, so they kind of raised the home grade. So they put this ordinance in place. But this isn't the case here. The builder had no intentions of adding a walkout or doing anything to better himself. He's not enriching himself. The developers are not enriching themselves. This is just a clear mistake that was done, and we're asking for forgiveness, I guess. I don't know how else to say it. I mean, it's, and it's not really, it's only a portion of it that doesn't comply, where the road dips down. The rest of it is fine. The neighbor won't have any problem. The other thing that Jim was saying before, the other thing that's where people look into their homes, like if you're standing higher, that somebody, this is clearly not the case here, because there won't be anybody in the rear yard, and the next house behind them is going to be over 150 feet away. It isn't like you're going to be taller. It meets everything else, all the other ordinances it meets. The building department recommended approval. I think Jim Padamo, or Mike Padamo, wrote that they have no issues with it, because the height of the building is within the ordinance. It meets every other ordinance. To have to rip out this basement, it would be just a cry. I mean, I just, I feel really upset about this. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Does anybody from the Board have any questions for the petitioner?
I have one question. You indicated when you were talking that it was posted in error. It was posted at, I believe you said 7.0 or 7.5?
Correct. It should have been 7.05.
Who is responsible for that posting?
I think it was Melissa, or, I don't know who, I noticed that outside on your thing where it says 7.5. Either Josh or Melissa that works there.
He is correct. It does say 7.5, but it's, as I indicated on my earlier slide, it's 7.05 is the variance he's seeking.
Which would be 1.05, because you're allowed 6, and it's only from a portion of the lot, not the full lot.
Thank you. One question I have. I know we talked about the hardship and the utilities and things. Can you reference a little more about the practical difficulty and why this would require a variance? Not necessarily a hardship, and it was designed or built wrong, but what's the practical difficulty?
Well, financially, and I know financially doesn't take into account, but it's probably going to cost $40,000 to tear out, I feel, a perfectly good basement, where you've issued other variances, and Jim has approved other variances, especially on the corner lots. Where the, by the way, this ordinance, I started talking a little bit about it, you're the only community that has this. All the other communities surrounding here, they don't have it. They just have a height ordinance, where you cannot exceed a certain height in your home, whether you build a ranch or a colonial, sometimes with the steeper roofs. You have to, and this does not violate that. So this was put in place clearly because there were some builders in the past that were taking advantage of things, so they said, okay, we're going to put a stop to this. We're going to put this ordinance in place. But in a lot of cases, like such as these corner lots, where you have, and Jim would verify that, he's approved a lot of these variances as such, in the past, where you have a difficulty, where the sanitary sewer is higher, or because the street dips down as such. And this is like borderline case, because the sanitary sewer is higher, Jim. And this, we could have probably made it if it was designed correctly, but there was a mistake that was made. The building department approved, everything got approved. If this would have been called, because typically, when there is a mistake on a plot plan, it comes back to us as a revision. We get many revisions from Anderson, Eckstein, wherever, everything's fixed, and then, you know, you proceed to construction. This slipped through the cracks. Everybody just didn't see it. And it's one of those things, I don't know what else to say. I mean, I'm being honest.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mr. Van Tiflin, can you confirm if there is a sanitary, was the sanitary sewer higher in that, on that street?
This is the first.
As the petitioner indicated?
This is the first that I've heard about that. I really think that this just boils down to, there was a mistake that was made. The benchmark was labeled incorrectly on the plot plan. The AW, when they reviewed it, they reviewed to make sure that the benchmark elevation was correct. It was. It was just labeled wrong in the actual drawing. And that's not something that they review for. It's the responsibility of the design engineer to make sure that that is all correct. So obviously, when somebody went to put the basement in, they used the benchmark that it was labeled instead of the one that was numbered correctly. So it, obviously, an honest mistake. Everybody makes mistakes, but, you know, this is, you know, the situation that they find themselves in. They could have built it according to the approved plan. We ran all the numbers. AW did approve it that way. And if the benchmark hadn't been mislabeled on the drawing, it probably would have been built that way.
I have a couple more questions, if you don't mind. So in the planning review criteria, it indicates that the applicant is asked to provide information displaying consistent justice will be achieved. What is that exactly saying?
So that you're not allowing this unit to have some advantages over, you know, that they can't do something that their neighbor couldn't do, unless it's tied back to a hardship.
Okay. It also indicates that if we were, the petitioner indicated that they may have cut down the basement to be compliant with the ordinance, but that then would put them in violation of the building codes. Can you confirm that that would in fact happen?
My understanding in discussions with Mr. Padamo is that if they were to cut it down, it would not actually be in violation of any building codes. It would be a shorter basement than most people are accustomed to, but would not be in violation of any building codes.
But they would still then be permitted to move forward after they cut it down to meet the ordinance?
Correct.
The petitioner also indicated that the lots, it looks like on both sides of this individual lot, is vacant and owned by the same individual building, this home. They, the nature, as it was indicated of this ordinance, was to avoid houses being built higher. Is that true?
That's correct. It is a relatively new ordinance that, as you mentioned, some folks were taking some liberties and forcing a walkout basement by kind of elevating their first floor. And it, I think, causes a number of issues. If you have a row of ranch houses, and now you have one sitting up higher, it kind of looks odd, and the neighborhood towering over everything else, as well as it creates a line of sight where one house is looking down into the other person's windows, and there was a lot of concern around the township at that point. That is why that ordinance was written, to prevent people from creating a walkout basement. And I don't think that's what they were trying to do here. I think that, you know, it would have to be much higher than 1.05 feet in order to do that.
So that being said, if they have control over the lots on each side of it, and if it was a condition of approval, that they grade those side lots to help balance the difference between the two, would that cause any drainage problems or any foreseeable complications?
I guess I would defer to Jim with regards to drainage. And I think we did talk with Mr. Morrow. I think they do not own the lot next door, but they work with, the petitioner works with the people who own it, so they could work with them to create, as you're saying, kind of a step down, so it's not so obvious that one house is a little bit higher. And it's only on one side. The other side is, it's a corner lot, so the other side's a road.
Okay.
But as far as drainage, I don't know, Jim, if that would impact drainage.
I believe, Simon, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that they've already cut the brick ledge down, so, because everything went higher. Everything went basically a foot, foot and a half higher than what it was supposed to. So they've already cut the brick ledge down, so they'll be back down to where they should have been had the mistake not been made. So I'm not concerned about drainage. Josh is correct in that we have one house that is really next door. Because of the drain on the side street, there'll be quite a distance between the next house when that property to the east finally develops. So in that house that would be right next door is not, isn't into us at all. So we could make some adjustments if, you know, the Board granted the variance. The concern that we always have with these types of things is setting precedent. And, you know, somebody makes a mistake, and now we may get a few more of these where mistakes are made, and now we've got, you know, and we're trying to keep these down, and, you know, now we're getting pressure to put them back up, so.
And at this time, you can't confirm whether or not the sanitary sewer in that area was slightly lower?
We would have to go back and look at the inspection records, the field plans from water and sewer, in order to know that. Like I said before, we've, you know, we reviewed the application when it came in. We met with the petitioner on one occasion, and that was never really discussed. We, you know, I used it as an example of the types of things that I grant variances for, so if I can see that the math just doesn't work, the house has got to be up in order to get it under the foundation, then I'll grant that exception. I have that ability in the ordinance. Also, on corner lots like these, where physically, by the time you go from one side to the other, you've got too much grade change in the road, and you cannot get that building below that 6-foot mark, I'll grant an exception. I probably have granted two or three of them this year. They're not as, they don't happen as often as they used to, because originally, the ordinance was set up as 5 feet. Now it's, now it's 6. So we vary, it's a rare occurrence that these come in with the number of houses that we build, but they do still come in.
One last question. So with this being a corner lot, generally, when someone is trying to meet these benchmarks, are they measuring it from generally one area, and because it's a corner lot, it was two?
What actually happened is, and you can see it on the plot plan, there are two benchmarks along the frontage of this parcel. There's one that's near the drain, which is on the side street, so the toll drain runs through there, and obviously, the ground gets lower towards a water course like that, so it's a natural place to put a catch basin. And then on the opposite side in the front, in what would be the front right of, yeah, right there, is the other catch basin. So there were actually two catch basins on the property. One was called out as the benchmark, but the wrong one was labeled in the plan view when they put the plan together. So I don't know who went and staked out the basement, but they obviously saw the B M initial that's on the plan, used that as the benchmark instead of the one that was really intended.
That's all the questions I have.
Can I just ask one quick question? You said that they could lower it and still be within the ordinance, and wouldn't, so that wouldn't be a practical difficulty, having to?
The code would be met. Their restrictions may, the restrictions and covenants for the development may have some language in it that says that all the homes in the community must have a basement. And I think that's, that may be what you're referring to.
Well, two things. The code couldn't be met, because if you put the I beam another 12 inches lower, now you don't have the headroom height. Now you're, now you're in a building code violation, because you need a minimum of 7 feet below that I beam. You don't have a head clearance below the I beam. And in addition, you'd be violating the subdivision restrictions that they say you must have a, or you have to have a basement. You can't build a crawl, it would be considered a crawl space. But cutting of the brick ledge, which was done, there's two things here. There's the top of the basement where your first floor goes on. That's very difficult to cut, because you can't cut that, and now you're lowering your whole basement, because now your I beam is below that. Now you don't have the headroom clearance anymore that you would in a basement. But the brick ledge did get cut, so there are no drainage issues, there's no engineering issues, there's no building violations. That's why I say there's a perfectly good basement, the sanitary sewer works, there's plenty of flow, because it is a little bit higher, Jim. I mean, yes, it could have still been within your ordinance, but the sanitary sewer is about 6 inches high. We would have had a drop at 6 inches. It could have worked. You're right. But it is, it is a little bit higher. So everything meets, all the ordinances are met. There wouldn't be a problem. Cutting the top of that basement would just destroy that basement. And for what it affects, it only affects the rear of the lot where it dips down, because the frontage is fine. The frontage is all fine. So the neighbor next door, even if they weren't to do anything, but I would recommend that we can adjust their top of the basement, so it kind of meets up and just gradually flows that way. Because usually, the corner lots are always the tallest lots. And then as you go down the street, then they start dropping. So we can make adjustments to the next door neighbor's lot.
So the design of the basement at this home was 8-foot, an 8-foot basement, not a higher?
Yes, it's a 7-foot, 10, yes, it's not a taller basement. Yes, it's a seven-foot, ten, yes, it's not a taller basement. It isn't, like, the, the builder is not enriching themselves by having a taller basement, or having a walkout, or having, this is a clear mistake, mistake on our part, and we pray for a variance request.
Any other comments or concerns for the petitioner at this time? All right. Anybody from the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Sir, if, if you'd like to speak, you can come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gino Cadenacci.
Sorry. If you can come up to the podium, just so we can hear you. We, we can't hear you unless you're at the mic. I'm sorry.
My name is Gino Cadenacci.
You need to come over here, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
There you go.
My name is Gino Cadenacci. I live at 55507 Cranberries Drive in Macomb Township. What I'd like to ask, what difference does it make if the, if the basement is a half foot higher? You can't even, you won't even notice that. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, you know, I wouldn't have a problem with it if I lived next door to that house. I mean, it was, is it going to throw everything off that, where it's, it's eyesore? I say let it go.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience that would like to speak? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back up to the board if anybody has any further questions or concerns. Before we do, I do have one comment. Actually, I forgot what it was now. So, if anybody else has any concerns.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to point out, as you know, as a petitioner here, that part of the ZBA is not to recognize a hardship or financial burden to you on an error that's made, although we would like to, and we wish we could on all instances. It's just not what we're here to do. What we're here to do is determine if there's a practical difficulty in the situation that's presented to us. What I can see here is that it being on a corner lot, there's two benchmarks, and who, who was measuring for you chose to benchmark it from the one area. Whether or not the sanitary sewer was higher, or there was a dip, we can't prove. But if that was the case, then that would provide for somewhat of a practical difficulty, or it would have had to been remeasured differently. I do believe that with it being a corner lot, there was two benchmarks, an error was made. The benefit to you right now is that you have the ability to create a step down in the lots next to you, and avoid any, any difficulty with that particular basement being higher. I do believe that your intention was to be in compliance with the spirit of the ordinance. Our engineers and our departments did their job by following through and following with the ordinance requirements. There, it was there to protect homeowners from having a house higher than them to where they could look down in the windows. I don't believe that was your intent at all. So, with that being said, I will make a motion to approve the variance in section 10.0704B.3, and allow for the elevation of the structure's first floor to be at 7.5 feet above the lowest top of the curb elevation, with the condition that the lot next to it will create a step down to avoid that being higher.
Some motion by Ms. Posey. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. Lawson. I do have one question, maybe for the attorney. Can we put the condition with the neighboring parcel, seeing how the petitioner is not in ownership of that parcel?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, we do have a motion and a second regarding the approval of this variance. Any more comments or concerns this time? All right. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. The motion is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving forward, we'll move on to 8B. This is with regard to permanent parcel 0804300030. This is a variance request for section 10 dot 0704 dot A dot 2 dot D. And this is to allow a lot depth to wish, width ratio of 3.24 to 1, when a 3 to 1 is required. Mr. Box, if you can take us through this, please.
Thank you, Chairman and Board. As you said, this is with regards to lot depth to width ratio. It is, they are seeking a 3.24 depth to width ratio, when 3.1, or 3 to 1 is required. The property is located on the east side of Luckman, not far from, from Town Hall here. The property is currently vacant, and it, and it does appear that the site could be developed compliance, in compliance with the ordinance as it currently sits. There, we don't see any unique conditions. Again, you know, like odd-shaped parcel, or, or large easements cutting across the property. We don't see any of that with this, this individual parcel. So, again, it falls back on the petitioner proving a hardship and a need to do this. I, I will point out that state law actually says depth to width ratio is 4 to 1, and, and Macomb Township is a little bit more restrictive, moving it to the 3 to 1 ratio. Properties to, to the east, south, and west all have 70-foot lots, which is similar to, to what he's seeking here. However, those are not as, nearly as deep as, as this lot, which is, again, why we have the ratio issue. However, the properties to the north all have 160-foot, a, a feet of frontage with just one residential unit on, on those. And you see in the image behind you, too, it's 319.2 feet deep right now, but there is some right-of-way that they, they would need to dedicate as well, I believe, that would bring it down closer to the, which is where we get to that 3.24. So, I, I guess, as I said before, we would defer to the petitioner to explain the hardship, because at this time, we're not seeing any odd-shaped lot or any easements moving across this property.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Box this time? Hearing none as a petitioner here for this item. If you could join us to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. Sure, that's fine.
Oh, center table.
No, I'm sorry, center table.
Yes. My name is Salvatore Russo. I've owned this piece of property for quite a long time. I bought it from the original woman that owned all of this property, all the way from 25 Mile to 26 Mile. She gave her family this prop, properties, and back in the day, it was all farmland. It had the golf course. It wasn't developed the way it is now. And they, when they split everything up, it met all the compliances back then. Being that nowadays, everything's being constructed. You have condos that are going in. You have the Wolverine Homes over there. I feel like everything has been shrunk down. So, this piece of property is 160 feet wide, and, like you said, 319 deep. My issue is, I don't feel like, I feel like it's too large to build one home on it. It won't fit in with the neighborhood anymore. Everything is smaller. You have anywhere from $300,000 homes to $500,000, $600,000 homes in the neighborhood. It would have to have a, a million-dollar-plus home to justify 160-foot frontage. I feel it won't fit in with the master plan. So, I'm asking for a variance to split it in half. 80-foot by the 319, I would grant the right-of-way for the 60 feet to the county. We, I don't have a problem signing off on that. That gives me 259 for depth, gives me 80-foot frontage. And I'm a little short for the 3 to 1 ratio. So, I'm asking for the 3.24. So, I'm six foot short on the frontage. I'm 19 foot short for the depth, or too much for the depth. So, this is going to require eight-foot sidewalks out front. I like everybody going through the neighborhood, walking around. They have dogs, bicycles. If the homes were put back just a little bit, I think this would be favored, because it would be safety for the homeowners of people walking in front of their house. The condos next door have a berm, where it kind of separates their sidewalk to the, to the home. This is going to have a straight flat front yard. So, I feel that a little bit of depth wouldn't be, wouldn't hurt. It would be a little bit safer for the neighborhood people walking, like I say, dogs and stuff. Sometimes they get loose. But, that is my, you know, my hardship on it. I feel it's, everything is growing around it, and this hasn't. So, I'd like to split it in half and do the 80-foot by 259. And that's, that's where I'm at. Any questions? I'll be glad to ask, answer.
Any questions on the board? All right. Hearing none at this time. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak on this variance? If you can state your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Jake Rushla, 55540 Luckman Road, Macomb, Michigan. I'm the property just to the north of Mr. Russo. So, I own the property, home adjacent to Mr. Russo's parcel. I, like many of the neighbors, moved to Macomb for the rural feel with the, the urban amenities, which are in close proximity. And that's kind of the intent of the ordinance, 10.07, or 10.0701, which states to provide a stable and sound environment with suitable open space for low-density residential development. So, Mr. Russo's parcel, 20-08-04-300-030, was split, like you mentioned, was from previously farmland, and therefore, the topography is relatively flat, does not contain any trees, wetland, or, and is a rectangular shape. Therefore, to me, it doesn't appear that there's any characteristic of the property that would create difficulty or hardship to prevent it from being utilized in accordance with the current zoning standard. The legal description, like we mentioned, is 160 feet wide, 319.2 feet long, and has a 33-foot easement from the side of the road, which in turn makes that property 160 by 286, while within that 3 to 1 ratio. The zoning code is written to prevent land developers from creating billable lots without adequate frontage, adequate access, and cannot be three times longer than the width. At 286 feet long, the minimum width of the property would have to be 95.3 feet. So, my understanding from what Mr. Russo described is, he's attempting to get a variance to split his 160-foot lot, and the two lots, which are 80 feet each, giving us a 3.575 to 1 ratio, assuming not counting that dedication. So, in effort to maintain the integrity of the zoning code, our community, the parcel would have to have an additional 30.6 feet than it currently is, to allow for that split to happen in accordance with the zoning ordinance. So, I'm asking the board to deny the variance in effort to preserve the beauty of our community, the intent of the zoning codes, and therefore, like I said, there's nothing preventing the property from being utilized in accordance with the current standard. We don't want additional homes built on skinny irregular lots next to the condos, which are already upcoming. I'm one of those yards that's over an acre, and that's why I moved to Macomb, where I can commute easily to my workplace, but still have, you know, the ability to enjoy my yard and the space around me. Any questions?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else from the audience that would like to speak regarding this issue? Sir, do you have anything to say on this? Behind you, I think you mentioned, okay. Just wanted to make sure you had mentioned. All right, back to the board. Does anybody have any comments or concerns at this time? I do have one, maybe from Mr. Box. The petitioner mentioned the master plan for the area. I don't know if that's even referenced. I mean, do we need to reference that? Is, is this a low-density area? Is, what is, what is the current zoning of this?
I believe this parcel is currently zoned, and I think Mr. Van Tiflin is pulling it up right now. But, I believe this parcel is R1, as is everything across the street, everything to its rear, and everything south of it. The, the neighboring parcel is where the different zoning category begins.
That's the condo development?
No, the condo is to the south.
Okay. So, but in the R1 district, the, the ordinance states that it's a 3 to 1 ratio?
Correct. All of, all of the parcels within the township require that. And there are many that are in violation of that, because they were created years ago from old farm fields. But, traditional, you know, housing, it, it's the 3 to 1 ratio. And, and R1 has a, a lot minimum of 70 feet, as I mentioned before. Everything across the street and, and to the rear have, have the 70-foot frontage, which is the minimum that this would, would have, and he's seeking to go down to 80, not 70. So, he would fall, lot, frontage-wise, he's, he's fine. It's just the 3 to 1 ratio.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments at this time?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Josh, can you explain to me why this, what's the difference, why the difference between the state and Macomb Township with the 4 to 1 versus 3 to 1?
I, that's been in place for a long time. I don't know why the township adopted 3 to 1. I don't, Jim, do you know? I, I think it's been the case for a long time within this township. But, it is 4 to 1 is the state requirement.
And can you expand on that any at all? Like, what, what would be the intent for 4 to 1 on the state?
Well, you, it, a lot of it, I think, has to do with getting irregular-shaped lots. You don't want lots with, you know, a, a long sliver that reaches out to a roadway, and then has a huge property. So, it, they become sitting behind or to the rear of other properties, things like that. And by creating the ratio, it kind of prevents a lot of that from happening.
So, when, I know we're going through our ZBA ordinances currently, would this possibly be one that would be addressed or looked into further with the difference between the state and the township?
Absolutely.
And if, if and when that happens, do you believe the recommendation would be to revert back to the state, the 4 to 1?
It, it could be all the way back to, to 4 to 1, or somewhere in between 3 and 4. Absolutely.
So, is it fair to say that this ordinance is outdated?
For sure.
Quick question. If, if we were to deny the variance, and the ordinance was to change in the future with the, with reviewing all of our ordinances, would the petitioner then be able to split it like he's requesting now, even though it was, didn't pass?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other comments or concerns on the board?
Real quick question about how long do you think it will take before it goes on to review, and may, there may be a possible change?
Well, we, we are doing a zoning audit right now. Actually, I believe that they're set to be done with the audit at the end of next week. At that point, we will start to dive into where there's conflicts in the ordinance. Those are the, those are the first things that we would fix. But, we do have a slew of other items that we have, you know, a list going essentially of things that we need to address and, and make changes. You know, anytime we see common issues coming before the ZBA, over and over and over again, we need to go back and look at the ordinance. And we do have a long list of those. 3 to 1, I think, is one of them that we see quite often here. So, that is certainly one that we're going to take a look at.
So, would this be something possibly, I don't know that he looks to maybe table, or would it be something where we'd need to make a decision, and then he would be at the mercy of if the ordinance changes or not?
Yeah. I mean, I think the petitioner could request tabling or postponing this at this time. Or it could go with, you know, obviously, our vote. If our vote is to reject it, we could, it sounds like he could wait and see if there is an ordinance change, if it, if that's this, the decision of the board and the department. I think if not, and it's denied, then he, and we don't change the ordinance, and he would obviously have to meet the intent of the ordinance, which is 3 to 1.
Correct.
So.
And I guess to, to further answer your question, you know, the audit will be done at the end of next week. Changing
Right.
the ordinance itself is a lengthy process, and this may not be the very first one we tackle. So, it could be many months before we get to any changes with this one.
Yeah. I, I certainly understand what you're saying. Just from my viewpoint, I understand that we may be looking at this ordinance. I don't necessarily see the practical difficulty. I see your request to split it to make two properties, which is your desire. I don't necessarily see a practical difficulty for a reason to split it and make a non-conforming use, essentially. So, that's my thoughts. If there's anything other comments from the board? Any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree. I have not, I've been trying to find a practical difficulty, but I don't see it. There's no easements that I can see that are causing a difficulty. I would make a motion to deny the request.
Okay. Motion denied by Mr. Piper. Is there a second?
Support.
Can I ask to table that? Can I ask to table this for another time?
Support by Ms. Lawson. If we can have some discussion beforehand, it has come to our attention that the petitioner has asked to table or postpone. Request some guidance from the attorney. At this point, can we pull our At this point, can we pull our, pull the motion and make a motion to table?
If there hasn't been a vote, yes.
Okay. So, should we?
Dave should amend his emotion if, and to see if he gets support to table it.
Okay. Ms. Piper, if you want to amend your motion to request, uh, to table this item?
Well, I would, I would like to withdraw my motion because the petitioner would like to table this request at this time. So, I will.
Okay, so your, your motion will be to withdraw, withdraw your current request and table the items?
And I will support that.
Ms. Lawson supports that. Any other comments or concerns? Okay, all those in favor of tabling this variance request, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That item is tabled. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sure the department will probably get back to you on another, I'm putting that back in front of the board. All right, our last item is item eight C. And this is with regards to permanent parcel zero eight-two-three-three-zero-one-one-two-four. This is a variance request for section ten dot zero-three-one-one dot E dot F dot two. And this is to allow a patio with brick fa- pavers to be installed twelve foot nine, uh, twelve feet, nine inches from the rear yard lot, lot line where twenty feet is required. Uh, Mr. Box, if you can take us through this one, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This property is located, uh, between twenty-two and twenty-three miles, uh, be, just off Card Road to the east. Uh, and, and as you mentioned, they're seeking, um, to have a patio that is twelve feet, nine inches from the rear lot line where twenty feet is required by ordinance. Um, the applicant states in, in his application, uh, that the, the patio's current location is better situated due to the ability to maintain a further distance from neighbors to the east and west due to the design. Um, the patio i- is constructed from identical materials, design and finish as the other patios within the neighborhood. Uh, much like the other ones, though this is already constructed, um, it, it is a square lot. Um, he's not in an easement, and there's no easements, um, that would cause him to have this specific layout. Um, so, so we're gonna default to, uh, the petitioner to, uh, make their case for, for what the hardship is. I will point out that, that there were no, uh, building permits pulled to construct the patio. Uh, my understanding from Mr. Maples, the building official, uh, he was actually out onsite on another property and noticed this. Uh, that's how it came to our attention, based on the plans that you see on the screen, and I think you have them in your packet as well. Um, it looks like the dates of, of when they were drawn are in the summer of twenty-twenty. So, I'm assuming that's roughly when this was built. So, it's been there for a, a year already. And, and the ordinance is listed, um, on the bottom of the screen there that, that it is, it does require, uh, a permit to be constructed. And this is the twenty-eighteen version of that ordinance. It's likely this was in before that, but it's been at least since twenty-eighteen a requirement. So, uh, again, I, I don't think staff sees a, a practical difficulty. So, we're gonna default to, um, the petitioner to make their case. And I think he's here this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Box? All right, hearing none, the petitioner is here in the audience. If you could state your name and address for the record?
Yes, good evening. Robert Walker, two-one-nine-six-eight Chaucer Court, Macomb, Michigan.
If you could do us a favor, we, we read your letter, obviously. Uh, you included it with your request. We typically look for a practical difficulty. Being that it's built, is not necessarily a practical difficulty. We can't necessarily take that into consideration when making a decision here. Um, can you kinda run us through why there is a practical difficulty and why this variance should be approved?
Well, uh, first of all, um, the builder trim-cut landscaping, when they put it in, I asked, was there a building permit required? He told me pavers did not require a building permit. Went on the site and looked, it only talks about concrete. It doesn't talk about pavers specifically. Um, the builder, he, he, uh, requested a permit. This is what I think or believe how they were prompted to look at it in the first place. He never finished the permit because he said, oh, you have pavers, so you don't need to do it. It was only when I was like, oh, well, I have a citation, that I came up here and found out that pavers, apparently, you do need a permit. Um, I understand the ordinance probably for lots that are budding up to each other, right? So, that someone doesn't build a, a patio when they're two feet from each other and you got a bunch of noise. However, my particular lot, there's an industry, uh, they do, uh, flowers, a nursery that's behind me. There's no other property behind me. And, and I just, it's baffling to me why this ordinance is in place, especially when I have no one behind me. And everyone on that, that side of the street, their houses also bud up against this nursery. So, I don't think it would be an unfair advantage if they wanted to go and extend, um, a little bit past what the ordinance is. I don't think it would be unfair for them to do so either. I'm just, I don't know, I'm trying to make, make sense of this. I, I did twenty-five years in military, I wanted to make Michigan my home. I came here, and then we put a bunch of money. I know money is supposed to not be a determining factor. However, it's already constructed. Had I known, and I know ignorance is not a determinant factor either. But this thing has been up, it's been up for over a year now. I'm just trying to make this thing make sense to me, if that makes sense.
I appreciate it, thank you. Is there any comments or concerns for the petitioner? All right, hearing none, anybody from the audience who would like to speak on this issue? There is none, so we'll bring it back up to the board. Any comments or concerns for the petitioner from Mr. Box?
I do, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mr. Box, so, um, I'm confused, or maybe, I don't know if either one of you can answer it. I'm confused, was a permit pulled for this patio?
My understanding from Mr. Maples was that a permit was not pulled. Uh, what, when I discussed this with him, he instructed, or, or told me that he had been out onsite, um, for another house being constructed, uh, for an inspection, and noticed this patio. And, and if you know Mr. Maples, he knows the ordinance pretty well. So, he knew that it required a twenty-foot setback and thought it looked a little bit closer. On further inspection, it is closer than twenty feet. Uh, and, and my understanding is that's when, uh, the code enforcement officer went out there and gave them a citation.
So, if the permit was properly pu- pulled, which is, if you hired this landscaping company, that's their responsibility to do, to be, make sure they're in compliance before they build something at your house. And if that doesn't happen, you should sue them. But that's not my advice to you. But if this permit had been pulled, could this all have been avoided for this petitioner? Would it, would it have avoided this?
Yes, he would have been, uh, notified right up front that the design he was seeking to build would, would require either a variance or need to be redesigned to, to meet the ordinance.
He also mentions that he couldn't find any of this information on our website. Can you confirm whether or not that to be factual?
Yeah, I had a, a screenshot of that here on, on this slide at the bottom. And, and I've highlighted in blue there the date of that, uh, version of the ordinance. So, it's been on there since at least twenty-eighteen. It's likely that it was even in older versions, but something within that section of the ordinance was updated in twenty-eighteen. So, that's the current one. But regardless, that's from before, um, this was, was planned and, and built. And he is correct in stating, you can kinda see it in the picture there. Uh, there is a, a greenhouse behind him, um, not other residential structures. However, I believe his neighborhood, as well as the neighborhood of the south of that greenhouse, are both stubbed into that with the intent that they will be residential, uh, based, uh, lots in the future.
So, if I may, then let's say, if this were to be approved, this variance approved, what does that do for the next individual who wants to buy and build a house behind that lot, knowing?
Well, it, it's not in, in any easement, so it, it doesn't, uh, require any easement encroachment agreement. I, I guess I would defer to Mr. Van Tiflin if there's any concern that it would affect drainage or, or runoff. Uh, other than, I don't think it would affect a neighbor behind them other than the fact that it might set it, you know, a precedent of seek forgiveness rather than seek permission.
Um, quick question. What is, what's a rear yard setback for this district?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet?
And they are twelve feet, nine inches off.
What about for the building? For the footprint?
This, this footprint, the structure itself, I wanna say fifty-five feet, thirty-five?
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five, thirty-five feet.
For the, from the rear yard? I just wonder, is this a shorter lot than normal? It's a hundred and twenty feet deep, is that?
That seventy by one-twenty is the standard lot.
Okay.
Um, just a comment to board members, um, you know, our biggest challenge on this board is to not set a precedent. And, uh, unfortunately, in this exact subdivision, not too long ago, we had a petitioner that had, um, an extension on their patio that was an overing outdoor living. And unfortunately, we denied that variance for the same reason, because they were seeking it for a financial hardship. Um, so I just want us to keep that in mind, um, that we've already had this instance in this subdivision. And it was at the fault of the, uh, architect or designer that they hired to landscape that patio for them, not the petitioner's fault. Um, but unfortunately, we, you know, had to encourage them to, to find resolution with the person or the developer that they contracted with, just a reminder.
Maybe one more comment from me. The rear setback for the patio that you referenced in the ordinance, does that change if they're abiding industrial versus residential versus commercial property? Or is that always twenty feet?
It's always twenty feet.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or concerns from the board? Any motions?
Uh, once again, Mr. Chairman, uh, I do not see the practical difficulty. Again, if, if it's a reputable contractor, they will stand by their work and they will pull the permits like they're supposed to. We can't use financial hardship, um, so I do not see a practical difficulty. So, I would make a motion to deny.
Motion to deny the variance request by Mr. Piper. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Ms. Posey. All those in, or is there any other comments or concerns at this time? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed by saying, by saying nay? That motion is denied. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Moving forward, item eight D is discussion regarding alternate members. Mr. Box, I believe you can take us through this one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. State law allows, uh, zoning board of appeals to have, uh, two, uh, two alternate members, up to two alternate members. It could be just one, but up to two. Um, there's some rules, uh, based on, um, meeting quorum. So, you still would have to have, um, a quorum of the, the original five members. So, i- in this instance, uh, Mr. Tuckfield is not here this evening. One of, if, if you were to have, uh, alternate members, one of the two would be allowed to attend on behalf of, of Mr. Tuckfield. Uh, however, um, if only one of the original five, the, the first five, uh, ZBA members is here, you can't have two of the alternates to get to three to make the quorum. You have to have a quorum with the original members. The alternates are there to supplement when people are, are absent for one reason or another. Again, great example is, is tonight, Mr. Tuckfield's not here. Uh, we've had some where we had as few as three people. Uh, so, I, I think we were curious to, the idea of, of maybe seeking some applications for folks who might be interested, uh, and therefore having some alternate members. Uh, at times, it can be unfair to residents when there's only three. They need a, a three to zero vote. Um, and, and even when it's four, if, if you guys were to split your votes this evening on any of these and they, they were two to two, that fifth vote becomes very important. So, I, I think we would like to hear some discussion on your end of whether this is something you would like to, to see. And, and if so, uh, we, I can, as a planning director, I can speak with the supervisor about moving that forward to, to possibly get some applications in.
Thank you. Is this something you would discuss? I know we've talked about our bylaws and, or, I don't know if we, they're considered bylaws or not, but a review of our policies and procedures. Is this something you'd wanna incorporate that or something you'd move kinda?
I believe this is already in your policy and procedures that allow you to have up to two alternates.
Okay. Does anybody, I mean, I don't have any concerns with it. Um, obviously, all of us, including, uh, Mr. Tuckfield, try to make it every meeting. Things happen. Uh, we were, was it, we were a bi-monthly or every other month? Uh, we've, we've moved up to monthly, and I think we've all done a good job of being here. But there are circumstances that, that don't allow us to be here on time. So, I don't have any problem with an alternate, um, sitting in my place if I can't make a meeting, especially if that's the desire of the planning director. So, um, if that's the direction we can go and we can have a full quorum of five people, I, I, I don't have any problem with that. I don't know if any of the members have any comment.
I support Mr. DeCaster.
Do we need any type of motion or is it just our discussion?
I, I think the discussion is enough. It's already in your bylaws that allow it. So, I don't think there, there needs to be a motion unless, uh, Mr. Orlando feels otherwise.
No, there doesn't have to be a motion because it's already provided for. So, now, now it's just a question of figuring out how you're gonna fill the positions.
I can kind of answer that question. Uh, generally, what will happen is that the supervisor will make an announcement at the next board meeting, um, and/or word of mouth. So, if you know anybody, that would be an asset to this board. Um, and then we would accept applications through the supervisor suite. And then, um, at some point, we'll review them and the supervisor will make a recommendation.
Thank you. Sounds good. We will look for further, uh, updates on that, I guess, at our next meetings. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next is public comment. I don't see any other public here tonight. Um, so seeing no one, I will close the public comment and move on to ZBA member comment. Is there anybody that'd like to speak?
I'd just like to say, I hope, uh, Chairman Tuckfield gets well soon.
I'll second that. Anything else? All right, hearing none, planning director comments?
Uh, no, no comments this evening.
And we will have an October fourth meeting?
November.
Or November?
Yes.
You can tell I retired.
Yes, you will.
Okay.
I, I think, uh, just a couple of days ago, you were gonna have just one item. Uh, but I think we got several that came in, uh, just in the nick of time to get on that agenda. So, it might be a lengthy agenda next time.
Okay. It's November second. Now I'm right, hang on.
All right, thank you. Uh, that being said, we'll move on to number twelve, which is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, motion to adjourn by Member Posey, supported by Mr. Piper. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn at seven thirty-seven. Have a good night.